Do you think you can? The Fourth of July, on the 1st of July, will be just as busy as July. In the park with Mike and Molly and Adam and Maggie. Then on the 5th is the swimming doll formation starting tonight. For those of you that are curious, beautiful. I say it again.
Last week, I already got one that was pretty cool.
And then, um, on the 2nd street. Yeah. Any comments or statements to say in the place of religion today?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any amendments to the agenda? Are you none? Under Mayor's report. There's been a lot of comment in Linsburg. First of all, thank you to all the people that made this past weekend, Midsummer's Festival here, a wonderful event. Heard from so many people that it was exceptional. Part of it was the weather. We know that that can always affect all of our festivals. And it was really a beautiful weekend. So, thank you to everyone who volunteers in all the very many ways. And so, congratulations on that weekend. And then also, as that committee will begin working again for 2020, if you were asked to serve on a committee, please consider doing such a thing. That's how Linsburg goes forward, is on our volunteers. And we need people to step up when you are asked. So, think about it and hopefully say yes and find a place that you can volunteer for your community. The other thing that I'd like to just bring forward is about the cleanliness of our town. I've had a number of people contact me who, as they're out on their front porches and they're watching people walk by their yards and they're walking their dogs and the dog leaves his deposit on their yard and some people pick it up and some people don't. We do not have unordnance against that, I don't believe. And, but I don't think that we do. But Gary's gonna check into that. But it's about being a good neighbor. And so, please understand that it is your responsibility, if it's your pet, to clean up after your pet. So, be a good neighbor and take care of that. The other thing is, we have a lot of activity happening here where we're gonna be on display. Our community is in July and there's a lot of cleanup that could be happening. If you are a store owner or a building owner in the downtown, take a good look at your property, not just in the front, but in the back. Our alleys are used a lot. And I think some of us might be appalled with what people see if they're driving down the alleys. So, again, think about being a good neighbor to the people that live beside you and clean up your areas, please. The only other thing that I wanted to bring forward is the 150th anniversary had a beautiful unveiling of plaques. They're commemorating our 150th. And they're also in the process of creating a wonderful event over the Fourth of July weekend. There were shirts that people could participate. Buy a shirt and be a part of this huge doll horse, whatever you call that thing that you're gonna do.
Living doll horse.
A living doll horse. So, hundreds of people will make the shape of a doll horse. So, hopefully you have gotten yours. And if you don't have it, talk to Betty. She'll let you know. But it's gonna be a wonderful weekend. A lot of reunions going to be here, celebrating that weekend as well. So, a lot of good things are happening in the month of July in Linsburg. That's all I have to say about all of that. So, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Moved and approved, moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, Roxy?
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Clay?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Consent agenda is approved. An appointment, EMS?
That would be Leveah Schmidt, correct? I think I said that right. And she has just recently passed her state certification for EMT. And we'd like to have her on our service for the volunteer service of the voluntary ambulance.
Do I hear a motion to approve Leveah?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve Leveah Schmidt and onto our EMT service. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Welcome.
Thank you. And thank you for being here, fellow mayor. This is Simon Brandon. Can we get close to him? Thank you. Oh, watch, I'm moving this way so you're guessless. Yeah.
This is mom. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to take a moment to make a comment I could about EMS. I was made aware that this weekend during the Midsummer activities, our EMS was called to the swimming pool twice. And I understand that not only were the services and the actions of our EMS incredibly spectacular, there was also very high praise for the young people at staff, the swimming pool director, Beth, thank you. A really, really difficult situation that I believe has had a good outcome. But time to acknowledge again how fortunate we are to have the staff that we do with our swimming pool and our EMS.
Thank you. And everything turned out fine, I guess? I'm sorry to know that about this, so.
I'm presuming so.
Okay. Great.
Good. 90 some percent. Thank you.
All right. Many appointments? Have there been any? My name's Kelly Gary.
No, no report.
One of the things, we talked council study sessions right before about Gary starting into a comprehensive plan next year. And that a lot of people don't understand what is a comprehensive plan. And so, I think we will have some new council members that they will need to be brought up to speed. And I know there are some new people on ENZ as well. Yep. Any old business?
No.
New business? Yeah.
So, I'd like to purchase some bunker gear for the fire department. We try to buy at least three sets a year so that I'm not having to buy 30 at one time. It's rather costly. And so, we got some bids for three sets of bunker gear. Which basically is coat and pants for a fireman. And the low bid was with Phil Fire. There is extra cost for the larger sets. And I'm really not sure who's getting the new sets. So, I included the larger size in there just in case. So, we may not spend all of this. I would like to at least allow for possibility of the extra large. So, I request the purchase of three sets of bunker gear from Phil Fire in the amount not to exceed $5,016.
All right. And. So moved. What, your second?
Second.
And Greg, you said this was incorrect here on what we have?
No, the $5,016 is correct. Under the fiscal note, it's a transposition of numbers.
All right. So, has you been moved and seconded to approve the expenditure for Phil Fire bunker gear? Any discussion? Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Clay?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
David?
Yes, thank you.
Next item is agenda management system.
Okay. So, in the 2019 capital improvement, excuse me, in the, back up here. Most recent strategic plan, one of the goals was to adopt new technology applications to streamline city business. And so, what we have before us is agenda management software that would aim to do that. We looked at probably six or seven different options. And I say we, both Roxie and I, were involved in this process. And what these systems do, they allow department heads and different folks that are putting things together into the agenda to do that in a more streamliner manner. Right now, we're collecting files in a file on a shared drive and checking, but it's some of the most obvious process at this point, given available technology. So, it would help with that, save staff time. Also then allow you all to have a better view of the agenda, have more control of your access of it. It will allow Roxie to report the minutes more easily, report votes more easily, because it's all in a package together. And of the. Of the, sorry. The softwares that we looked at, or the providers that we looked at, TownCon really stood out as the most user-friendly, the most simple, and it's also the most affordable. So, win-win there. And so, we would ask for a motion to approve a 90-day trial. And that was part of the idea of TownCon as well, that they allow us to trial it, no penalty. And then, there is a 3% discount if you pay for a year of time, but we'd also just keep it on a month-to-month basis.
Oh, and you can eat it?
Yeah, super flexible. So, we're not stuck in something.
All right. So, you were looking for a motion to approve $750?
Yes.
Looking at a motion to approve $750 for purchase of TownCon flower agenda management system for three months?
So moved.
Second?
Please.
Moving seconded, is there any discussion?
Are there local questions? Is this web-based or is it software?
It is, it is cloud-based, yeah.
Okay. Why? It's come through council, $750. That could be authorized by administration, right? Even the full purchase price could, right?
Full service, the full year price could not. Can you write, our floor is a 25 number, so.
Okay, I was thinking it was five.
On the full year, so we actually come back to this point, I think.
Sure.
The other reason is because this is going to impact your use of the agenda, your access to the agenda. I wanted to make sure you were aware of that. And it's related to strategic plan. I wanted to make sure that you were aware of what was being done to further the strategic plan.
Very good, thank you.
Great. All of us in favor? We're voting on $750, right?
Yeah, we still have a lot of motions, so.
Okay. Yes, we have your vote.
It's mandatory, but.
Okay. Roxy, so Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Clay?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Motion from Gary. Gary, you see a restroom?
Okay, this is a 2019 capital improvement. And one item is the renovation of a skate park restroom located next to the city hall parking lot, which is getting a little tired. We offered to plant stuff at that turn, put it together, did a request for proposal to go out to several contractors in this line to get back to us with a bid to complete the renovations. More I thought about it over the weekend, more I wanted to add some items. And so, you see revised version in yellow of what I added to what you already were in the package. As far as specific items to be renovated or replaced. Those items, replace the changing stations, replace the drinking fountain, and replace the 16 windows that are up on the cliff boards. I missed that. I also want to add an alternate. We're asking for a lump sum bid for this project. But I would like to see what the cost of plumbing fixtures would be as a separate one. I believe that it would be upwards in the high thousands. I could see it turning between $8,000 and $12,000 for that alone. And I want to be able to pull that out. Honestly, if I go over to the bathroom and I look at what's there, and I just don't see any need to replace those fixtures. They are in good shape, a top, a stove again, it agrees. If we don't have to spend the money, let's not spend the money. On the other hand, we give a low number, it comes within the budget. Maybe we go ahead and pull a card. That's a decision we'll make when we review the RFPs in August. I've also asked that the contractor or the company responsible provides it by the end of January so we can get that in and then have them complete the four months. Now, I guess specifically, I want to ask for a motion to accept the RFP as modified. And I will answer any question.
I'm moved to accept this as modified.
Second? You've been seconded to accept this as modified. Okay, the first item that I'd like to ask about is, it says replace two baby changing stations. Will one of those go in the men's restroom?
There is one in the men's restroom.
And so, there's one in each room? Okay. And then the drinking fountain. Is that up near our fire or what?
It's in the toilet. Where, what would you call that room? If you walk in and then there are doorways to each restroom. What would you call it? Fourth? Fourth, it's in the common area.
Okay. I don't know if you saw that new idea about refilling your drinking stuff?
Water bottle.
Yeah. Are there any new ideas on drinking fountains as far as being able to? I don't even know what that means. I saw the picture of what one looks like. I think they're in Sweden is where it came from.
No, they've got it in a lot of, where it appears in like a.
Are they real expensive to do it?
Serviceable, Mr. Smith.
Well, I mean, if we're replacing things, you know, to look into something like that, whatever that means. How does it operate?
Nothing else on the table.
Really?
I think there's some.
Yeah. Don't want to be, don't want to support it, I'll make, we'll make a point of that.
Yeah, looking at that, thank you. Okay, any other comments? All right. Are we, we're not, are we not spending money?
No. When you're discussing, you go to the scope board.
Okay. And we had a.
I'm not, I don't know about everything. Is it climate control?
Yes.
Yes, is it? Have a solar.
Heat pump?
Yeah. And air conditioning?
Yes.
Check it out.
It's not going to get out much.
All right. Any other comments? Or greater than? All of us in favor approving the this RFP? Say aye.
Aye.
There's a vote? Okay, Gary?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, you can close it up, please.
Roxy?
I'd like you to update both our heart, happy and confident of our ordinances. And this is a quote that we received from a media group who is our current contractor, so.
I'm sorry, I'm very, so. And what is that cost for that?
Right now, their estimate is $2,572.
And we have a recommendation for accepting $2,700, is that?
All right. Because it is just their estimate, depending upon how many pages it ends up being, their capulation, they should buy or sell certain things. There could be some varies.
Okay, and since this is quite lengthy, what we are, we're not going here by eye by eye. So, we're looking to approve $2,572 or $2,700? Is she just up to $2,700? Up to? Okay. Minor motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion to approve up to $2,700 for the code of ordinance supplement. Not to exceed $2,700.
Not to exceed, all right. What, your second?
Second.
Second? So, we've been seconded to approve up to $2,700. Any more discussion? Cory?
Yeah, since you asked. Maybe if you just explain a little bit more what we're really talking about here. Are these new ordinances that were approved, like the new state statute or the law ordinances? Well, compared to the state process, they'll adopt bills that passes. What you're doing is codifying it at the state level. It becomes a statute if it's adopted by both houses or both chambers. Here, it's taking those ordinances that have been adopted and codifying it into municipal code. Good. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Roxy? Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Clay?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
David?
Motion does carry. We've been talking to versions.
Well, actually, next we have the employee handbook.
Oh, I'm sorry. The employee handbook, who's going to talk about that?
That'll be me. The, what you have in front of you, in your packet, is a revised employee handbook, some new sections that have been added, our disability accommodation, religious accommodation, Genetic Information Bomb Disclosure Act section, social media policy, telephone and cellphone use, use of, or city property, domestic violence leave, building security and workplace violence prevention. Those have been added. The following sections have been modified. Unlawful harassment, non-solicitation. And that's kind of been divided out between political non-solicitation and solicitation of goods and services within city employees, how it's handled during work hours. Vacation, the policy itself in terms of leave, the amount of leave you accrue and use has not changed. It's more explanatory in nature and hopefully more understandable for all the employees. And then, the last one is a modification of the educational assistance section.
And we are approving?
You would approve, yes. You would, actually, you would approve the whole employee handbook.
Employee can look after this.
Yes.
All right. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
Moving seconded to approve the employee, the new employee can look. Any discussion?
I compliment the administration and staff for doing this. I think the more clarity we can have in our working conditions, the better it will be. I think this is a great thing.
All right. Any other comments? All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you to Roxy and Greg. Is there many people working on this?
The primary were Roxy, Lucas and myself. And then, we got to put on other sections from other departments.
Okay, thank you. All right. Now, are we ready for the diversion channel?
Yes. In August of last year, we, or you contracted with Wilson Company for design and engineering on the diversion channel project. It was also, at that time, we were looking at Cow Creek project also. This is funded through the Stormwater Utility Fund. And based upon the available funds in Stormwater Utility in 2018, at that time, only approved 75% of the cost of the project. We are now at a point where we need to approve the, or you need to approve the remaining 25% of the cost of the project for design and engineering. And this one's on the diversion channel NK4 Box Culver. That amount seeking approval for is $33,699.46.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'd like to make the motion to approve $33,699.46 to Wilson Company engineers to complete the design and engineering for the diversion channel NK4 Box Culver project.
Second.
Have you been seconded to approve this? Any discussion? You're in? None? Nothing? Cory?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Clay?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Motion does carry. The Cow Creek Engineering Phase Two.
Similar situation as before. This was, the 75% was approved in August of last year. Funding, full funding was not available. So, seeking approval of $26,209.69 to complete design and engineering for the Cow Creek grade project.
Do I hear a motion to approve this?
Motion to approve.
Your second?
Second.
Any discussion?
This hasn't been done yet, has it?
No, we are, I mean, the goal is to be, been in this, I think it was early fall, with construction. The nice thing about this project is since we don't have to worry about compaction of the soils, we, they can work on it through the winter, provided it's not too frozen and spilled in the dirtwork. So, it would be worth the idea to start in the fall. And I can't remember the timeline on the two projects.
I'm just asking for, because my house is frustrated from it. And it worries that it's, we're not taking good care of this property. Will you just basically remind me what this is going to do to Cow Creek?
It will remove sedimentation out of Cow Creek, the diversion channel while it diverts water from coming into the community. The downside of the diversion channel is the flow of water that comes through the community and goes through Cow Creek has lessened. So, Cow Creek doesn't get cleaned out like it used to and at a higher flow rate. So, over the last, what, 25, 30 years, its sedimentation has increased in Cow Creek. Then, in some places, it'll sedimented in over two feet of sedimentation. Then in some places it'll sediment it in over two feet of sedimentation.
Is it, it's still going to be a problem though as it goes north, is it not? That it has some places go? I mean, it, it goes to farmland that's been farmed over.
Well, it, it, we, I mean, the whole design is to go through, go to Fourteenth Avenue. We're trying to work with the property owner there. That doesn't solve the whole issue. But if, the, the challenge becomes, if you wait till you get all of everything lined up, you'll never get the project done. This was attempted many years ago and working with Celine County so that this whole channel could be cleaned out all the way until it enters the Smoky Hill River. And Gary correctly answered that over by measure?
Yes.
And it fell apart from the Celine County side of things. So this is a first step in an effort for a longer-term strategy to address the issue. Some nice things that have happened in the interim is on West Darkville Street, on both the south side and the north side, we've had property, well, we purchased one piece of property. We had the other piece donated to us. So we were able to use that as more of, I wouldn't say detention, but a, a, a retention area so that it doesn't, we have more capacity. Is that a long-term solution? No.
Right, steps though.
Yes. And, and with this project, it will be a challenge because Cow Creek is on private property from where it enters the community until access to the community. So easements, and, and we've had discussions with the city attorney on how we can do those easements. Because if we have to go through and actually do a survey and describe the easement on each property, it's going to get really expensive. We're looking at whether we can define the central line of the, the channel in, in, say, X amount of feet on either, either side of the city, of the city.
Central line.
Thank you very much. It's easier said for you than me. And that's one of the avenues we're looking at.
That's good. I just have kind of lost track where we were on this. I appreciate the explanation.
So the Stormwater Utility that we now have, these dollars will come from that?
Uh, from the engineering. The plan is to bond these projects because there's about one point two million dollars for both these projects together, if I remember correctly.
So that would be debt service, kind of?
Yes, we would issue, and then in future years, it would be debt service.
But as a reminder to our listening audience, this is, these are phases that we pulled out of the proposed original plan, which was over four million dollars, if I remember right. Is that correct? Wasn't it?
Uh, I mean, when you, when you look at everything, yeah.
And we just have picked out and prioritized so that there, we continue to work to prevent a repeat of 2013.
Gary, do you have any idea how many property owners are killed now?
Well, it depends on how far away you are from the channel. But there's about eighty-nine directly impacted by the channel itself. Potentially eighty-nine different easements. And that's an important part of the project, too. Once we establish those easements, now we have the means to maintain the channel in the future, which has been one of the big problems. How do we get back in there and keep it clean? So it's very important. I figured out.
If I may, I, I'm sorry, I, I just, it's to mitigate, we, I, we can't guarantee it's going to prevent any flooding.
But we continue to work on approving that.
Yes, very much so.
So we diminish the, the...
The opportunity, yes.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I just didn't want to public the thing.
And this is how the wheels of progress in cities turn slow. We've been probably talking about this, I remember with Ken Swisher and Bud Benson.
Two thousand and five.
Two thousand and five, okay. So then the Fourteenth Avenue. Corey?
Uh, where is Fourteenth Avenue? What room is that?
Try past Thirty.
I was going to say that.
Is it past or is it old?
Harrison Cole.
Harrison Cole. But Fourteenth Avenue runs along the east side of the sports complex, between the overpass and the sports complex is where we're looking. Well, or north, does that extend where the Cow Creek enters the zip? Or north? Yeah, half our north of the Bald Islands, just a couple miles. It's not that far, I mean...
Half mile?
Yeah.
About a half mile.
Half mile, okay.
Be the name of Harrison Cole. Fourteenth Avenue. There you go. If that one is old.
Any further questions? So this is a motion to encumber twenty-six thousand, two hundred and nine dollars and sixty-nine cents. Is that correct? Right, what, I think you have a motion in the head. And so Roxy? Rick?
Yes.
Corey?
Yes.
Lang?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Does pass? There's no executive session, or?
Yes, there is.
Sorry, Gary?
I move to go into executive session to discuss a claim against the city pursuant to the attorney-client privilege exception K S A B two or five minutes. And to include the city attorney and city administrator, the open meeting will resume at seven twelve P M.
Seven twelve?
Seven. Five, uh, five minutes, I'm sorry. Seven twelve.
Well, yeah, yeah. We'll leave it at seven twelve. So. Yeah, so that was all.
Okay, all votes in favor, say aye. That was the motion. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all votes in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Better walk next.
Better walk next.
I'll push to make the next chair. You know, it's, it's all right. It's all right. You get it. It's only, I have another question. Eighty-nine, six.
City administrator, the office chair.
I'm sorry, Roxy, what did you say?
It's...
That?
The people place of...
It's what?
People place.
No.
Used to be. Daytime so.
My time so.
My time so. Why getting that old then? Oh, remember this.
Okay, there, there are the blame chips on the real adventure of the rush.
I think, no action was made.
All right. Are there any other?
If we have a moment, could I update people on activities for July fifth and sixth, representing the Cespos Centennial Committee? The Old Fashioned Fourth of July will continue as it has in years past, so go enjoy that. But there won't be, there won't be fireworks provided to a crowd that evening. Be a good time to team up with neighbors and have some neighborhood fireworks, if you like. On Friday, July fifth, we'll be making the Living Dollar 2019 at the, in the town square, intersection of Main and Lincoln, where a few hundred of your closest friends will be gathering dressed in red t-shirts to make a living dollar horse. We'll have drone and still shots taken and they'll be downloadable later. You can, if you've ordered your shirts, you can pick them up at nine A M. We'll start forming our dollar horse at, at ten A M. Tom Nelson will be pre, about one o'clock in front of the Good Merchant. He'll be using the community piano and doing a little of his, one of his music shows on Timpani. And Saturday, Friday night, in front of the historic, beautiful Swedish pavilion, will be Dancing Dream, an ABBA tribute band. Gates open at six thirty, I believe. We'll have a food truck there. We've kept prices very reasonable, so it can be for the family, twenty dollars for eighteen and up, ten for school age, six to seventeen. And children under age six are free. That will be a fun evening of really good music to listen to. And then on Saturday at six P M., we'll have Stan Hayes, the 2018 CNN Hero of the Year finalist. And he's going to be cooking up some of his famous barbecue. That is free for our guests. We will, though, make a free will donation a possibility. And then we'll all traipse over to the practice field at the high school, which is on the southwest corner of State and Burma. Does that sound about right? Yeah. And that is a free firework show. It's going to be a spectacular show. The professional pyrotechnician is also a former Linsburg resident, Brent Foley. And it promises to be a good time and there is no charge for admission. So please join us for a three-day celebration of Linsburg turning one hundred and fifty years.
Thank you very much. All right, any other others?
No.
Okay, hearing that, would you like your motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I guess.